All right, welcome to the Brookfield Settlement Meeting, August the 7th. Please, those who wish to join me in place of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. And with that, I entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrant of August the 1st, 18, for $112,524.60. Prove an expense warrant for August 1st, 18, for $20,878.09. A debt warrant for August the 6th, 18, for $273.54. And approve an expense warrant for August 7th, 18, for $30,375.30.
You have that motion?
I second it. Any discussion on this topic? Hearing, none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed. Motion passes. Announcement, please note, time estimates on construction of the new handicap accessible town hall bathroom is as follows. The work is established to begin on September 24th and end on November 24th. Prior to the start date, there will be in-house construction that will impact the existing kitchen. The agenda for tonight begins with a vote to accept the National Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Adam, I turn to you.
My name's Adam Renard. I'm from CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Well, I was here several months ago to introduce you to a draft plan of the hazard mitigation update. This is a five-year update. Your current past plan expired. We're working closely with Cindy Thompson, Herbert Jaffey, and Chief Peter Martel from the town to update the plan. I have a copy of the plan. We'd like to have that. I'll be posting the plan as it stands tomorrow morning. I'm here today to ask you to formally adopt the plan. Mima and FEMA have both reviewed the plan. FEMA has internally approved your plan pending the adoption. I believe Karen has a copy of the adoption certificates. If you decide to vote on that today, get your signatures, and I will send this plan back to FEMA for their formal adoption. It's one more check to go through. I just briefly highlight some of the findings. Brookfield, some of the biggest risks identified in Brookfield were winter storms, kind of standard, severe thunderstorms, hopefully not tonight, wind and flooding. Those tend to be the biggest natural hazards. So we identified several strategies. Just highlighted a couple briefly. We identified about 30 strategies, but I'll just highlight a couple. Implement a vegetative debris management program to reduce debris and thereby mitigate risk of stormwater flooding, riverine flooding, and winter storm damage. Another strategy to inventory your shelter emergency resources so you know what's on hand when an emergency happens. Continue to support the regional highway equipment share and co-op. And also to, and also incorporate flood protection measures when critical structures located in the flood plains are rebuilt or renovated to try to limit the damage to flood. It's a pretty comprehensive plan. It's approximately 90 pages total, not counting a couple of maps we produced for it. There are three maps and a fairly lengthy appendix with documenting the planning process, glossed for terms, and a survey that was put out by CMRPC. There are a few dozen people that completed the survey, and the survey results are in the plan also. Do you have any questions while you have out the plan?
Turn to Peter for any comments?
No.
Say the course.
I think how many times we've done this with Central Mass Regional Planning, but it's a nice all-inclusive thing or something, you know, simply had to step in and put a little background on it. It's a good overall plan, something that, you know, our local managers can review. Let's say local planning, we don't like you mentioned, you know, building and zoning things when it comes to flood plan and how to long-term react and more reaction, because that's what we really fund and focus on, but it's good. I open up for something down the road.
I think one thing that would be important is getting copies of it made up, Karen, for the capital improvement planning committee and the advisory committee so that they understand where some of the requests for support, whether it's for infrastructure, whether it's for equipment, that would be great. I don't know that you need, like, copies for every member, but at least get them a courtesy copy of each.
Play that, right? Adam, is it available, electronic?
I'll post it on our website. I'll send you a copy.
Yeah, maybe that's even better. Eighty pages, a bit much, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, one copy for each committee.
Yeah. An electronic.
FEMA is supposed to send you a copy once they have their final approval, so you'll have that also. There'll be another email. I believe Karen's on the list, and I believe Cindy's on the list to get the email to final approval.
And is it a pretty safe assumption that, given that we work with you all both on this and with a lot of our CDBG work, that we're trying to align some of the work amongst that?
Yes.
Center Mass, going way back to Bill Scanlon as a history, just keeping, knowing what we're interested in, and all of a sudden you get a call from somebody that are like, hey, this just came on the radar that we really have to do out and need to work with this from Mass to Mass. The timing is good, too, because the federal government announced a series of grants today, hazard mitigation grants mostly for flood, and you have to have this in place.
In place.
I think pending, it's not we won't be held, just because it's being held up in families, but the fact that it's in there, you have to have this in place because you consider those grants. So having the last one ever lapse, this one's in the final phases, I forwarded that down to Cindy today. And we've been, actually, it's two of those things years ago, but her still has some flood areas that he'd like to address, and some of these federal grants are within that window, so.
Great.
The timing's good.
So I entertain a motion to approve the sign.
You have that motion?
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed. Motion passes, and we will sign a document.
Thank you.
Cindy's not here tonight, so you don't need a copy tonight, do you? Linda, Linda's not here tonight.
Yeah, I can wait on it.
Okay. Okay, we'll put that back in this folder for Linda to sign. Oops, some stuff. All right, so then the next is, I don't know, just fold this over. There we go. All right, so now the next on the list is a contract agreement between the town and Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and this relates to the municipal vulnerability preparedness work. So any conversation around that?
One, you attended, we had, you might just, did a Central Mass read of that?
Probably Andrew Law. Andrew Law's going to lead for the town to get a lot of.
When it came around, we've never been involved in it before. We heard things about it, and we had an impromptu meeting, sort of the highway garage we spoke about, and we were very optimistic. And we, we applied for things all the time, and occasionally we get into a new development, and all of a sudden we get notified.
We did.
Oh, you've been approved for $28,000, and then you'll go to communities much harder than that these in the past, that didn't get anywhere that much. So I was the original point of contact on it when it was just, okay, that's a common grant, we'll put it to pilot. We threw out a lot of ideas where we could approach this with Andrew, and when it got approved by the state, I don't know what they were looking for us to do. We looked at taking care of more dent trees, taking care of roadside debris, and also, you know, reforestation from a lot of trees that we've had to take down. We talked about this in the August, so I don't know where the federal government would, or the state, I don't know which one they're targeting.
Well, and I think.
I think if we did this contract, and that's the obvious first start, but then finding out, okay, what did they like about our application that we can act on.
All right, go ahead. The contract, the grant that you received will be for two things. There'll be an MVP workshop. That's, 71 towns have played this workshop already. Another, I want to say 60 to 70 are in this current phase, so it's about 40% of the state is taking power in this program. Brookfield is a little bit different as they have an add-on piece, that's why you got more than most other towns, to do a survey, to survey the south side of the Quaybuck River, to expand, if you want to expand your water service to that end. So that's, that's the reason you're getting more than most other towns, is to take that extra step. Most towns, it's just the workshop.
And I know some of the more concentrated communities have had some challenges maintaining their water supply through wells. I know Nanitanqua recently had to drill pretty deep in order to maintain their water over there.
And we shouldn't, we shouldn't get ahead. $28,000 is the first of many steps to get a proposal to get anything like that, but, you know, we can hope that we can, we can get this project well on its way and hand it down to the next generation of all of us to see this through.
Right.
From public safety standpoint, just having any type of municipal water over there, and Cindy was part of that initial workshop meeting we had on MVP, she's one of those residents that, right here, her well runs dry.
Exactly.
And it was shallow, so to start anything, you know, whether it's satellite or seismic well identification and what we did.
Right, it would be a first step.
What we did, stand-up replacement over there, that was a couple million just down Stanter, both of them, Stanter.
Right.
And we're looking at all of these, so we're talking many years, but this is just amazing. $28,000, yeah, to get something rolling on this, I think would be phenomenal.
At least get some feasibility work done and some initial look at what we need.
Once we go through the process of the workshop, which is a pretty regimented process, it's step by step, and you come up with a report at the end. You become a MVP certified town, that makes you eligible for MVP action grants. It also gives you, we'll call them bonus points to other grants, for example, Mass Works Grant. You get a kind of a tiebreaker point if you have this in place, which gives you an edge to other towns that don't have this. It's a good thing to have. It's an interesting process. I helped do a regional workshop last year with Grafton, it'll be in Northbridge. It pulls in a large chunk of the community from various backgrounds, just talking about the type of problems that the town faces with hazards and how to try to plan for it in the future. It's a different program in that sense where most programs and plans are kind of dealing with the last few years and short term. MVP is more of a long term. What's, what is it going to be like on the ground 25 years, 50 years, 100 years from now? It's a long-term planning process.
Well, you look at what Webster's going through right now, it's time for us to do some thinking and make sure we got our act together.
What exactly is Webster going through?
The tornado hit the other morning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, Sturbridge had their issues a couple of years ago.
Three tornadoes in two weeks.
Yeah.
The whole perspective was, in calendar year 2018, six in 11 states had had 12 tornadoes. Put that in perspective, in calendar year 2018, the state of Oklahoma has had 12 tornadoes.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Interesting, Peter.
One point on this, and I'm not trying to evade it, but when we first, it was just a shot and die, they needed a point of contact. I looked away apparently at some point during that meeting, and I was named a point of contact. Now that's actually got legs, and we're talking about real money and everything, whether it's just for the board. I think eventually, if we, when it eventually turns into a water project, it would obviously go to the bar of water commissioners, but I think right now, I don't know how the contracts were written out by everybody, I think I need to ship this department's office, this front overall thing, because it goes a little bit beyond, you know. They needed a point of contact initially, that was fine, but now we're talking about it, about contracting with somebody, so it's more of the board's wheelhouse than just mine's.
And should we motion and pass this? Linda is the point of contact based on this guy.
Okay, because I was getting some stuff initially, and then it became, and not knowing what it was, if it was for risk reduction with trees and whatever, that would be one thing, but now we're talking about a multi-potential project.
Multi-partner.
And this is, you know, whether or not this gets handed off to Graham Rider eventually, potentially for that.
That could be.
Because even if he's talking about workshop availability, you know, that's something mandated, one or two people go to, that becomes a scheduling issue for me.
The workshop, the state wants at least 30 people at the workshop. It's not always practical, but it's a good size workshop.
Right, but we could, we could try to pull in folks again from some of the committees that have the purse strings.
Especially this is a target, too. If you're looking for local involvement, we could word out for the residents of South Brookfield, regardless of that, you know, this is the long term. People that have moved in and planned and staying.
You know what you might even consider is for that meeting, so how big a workshop, or how long a workshop is it?
There's two options, either one day of eight hours long, or two, two, four hours, two days, four hours each. So it's, it's pretty intense. It's, it's a hands-on workshop.
Yeah, you want to do it over a month and, yeah.
Well, I was thinking of trying to coordinate, and, I mean, if we're going to be focused on the south side of the river, see if maybe we could actually use Nanitanqua's meeting space.
Maybe.
And meet over there and see if we could get, encourage some of the citizens over that side of the river, if it's in their backyard, to actually go.
Yeah, over, you decide, as you're point of contact, when you get the contract set, Andrew Law will be the one to really guide you through the whole process. I'll be there assisting him, I've been trained in the process. Yeah, everybody at CMRPC will help. Brookfield has been trained, you have to stay trained to run the workshops, so.
Excellent.
It's a good program.
So with that, if there's no more discussion, then.
I'll make a motion for, for us to sign the contract agreement between ourselves and CMRPC related to the municipal vulnerability preparedness program.
And I'll second that. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no one's opposed, motion passes, and this will be for Linda to sign.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Adam, thanks. Safe ride back to the city.
All right.
All right, so next on the agenda is Brookfield volunteer discussion. Peter had sent in a note, but I just, yeah, no, Peter.
Peter O'Connell.
Sorry, Peter.
Different Peter, sorry.
You're on your way, Peter. Thank you. Dan Kane is doing, or has been doing, a survey work. It suggested that they did not receive a master plan committee input. I, on behalf of the group that was meeting under the master plan, in fact, did provide the survey and get the survey out. And again, Danielle is looking to recommend or promote volunteering within the town on the different town boards and whatnot. We do have an issue with respect to the master plan and getting that reconstituted. Unfortunately, with Dr. Lubin's death and some other things that happened, Phil's passing, we lost the opportunity to have the number of members, and we did lose momentum. The good news is, with the open space and that activity later this year, it would say that we would come back to the master plan committee, or reconstituting a master plan committee, to pick up the ball and continue on. The good news out of what work was done is that we did do an inventory of the original master plan of what was done and not done, and we were at, at a point to then survey the different committees as to their position with that inventory, so this would be a good, good place to start once we get moving.
And I do have a question surrounding this, and I think something that might generate more interest is if, I know I've heard from a number of different people, support for, like, an economic development committee, and some of the larger towns have them, and I'm wondering if, when this is reconstituted, if we include that aspect of it in the charter?
Yep.
Because then, you know, it makes it clear that it's not just about the longer-term planning, it's also about, okay, so since we say this is what we want for the character of the community, how do we, you know, how do we leverage the vision that people have for the town into something that actually turns into dollars and cents for the town as well?
You actually do something.
Yeah.
So my logic or thought process is that the open space stuff will reconstituted November timeframe, because that's when the money becomes available.
Okay.
So we, we've got to do phase two of the open space where the grant monies are available in December, so November, we get our act together. We, CMRPC has committed direct technical assistance to us to support that, and so with that, gather the folks up again that were working on the open space, apply for the grant, get the grant, and do the open space piece of the master plan, which fills, fulfills the open space need, which lines us up for two things. One, moving forward with the master plan as it relates to open space, and it puts us in line for additional monies. And so during the phase one activities around open space, there was conversation around the rec committee and different ideas as far as ball fields and growing playgrounds and those kinds of things. And so we need to think about where the open space activity moves, and so maybe people will move in that direction, the rec group moving in that direction to support that, at the same time getting the other folks to jump onto the master plan activity to continue that. And if you throw the economic development piece into that, that's an additional good thing.
I think it incentivizes people to get involved in it, I think.
Pulls it together. So again, we've got some opportunity. So again, I did fill, fill in for both open space and master plan for Danielle's work, and so hopefully we'll have some volunteers moving forward.
Okay.
On that topic. That was what I thought we wanted to talk about, Karen, is that?
Say, yeah.
That's it? All right, on that topic. So then it's to entertain a, Carrie Von Hall to.
Oh, yeah, I thought we had voted this out. That's all right.
No, no, you're going to do this in a second.
Okay.
So with that, we do have a volunteer for the capital improvement planning committee in Carrie Von Hall, and I entertain a motion to appoint Carrie to that position.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No one's opposed. Motion passes, and I will pass it to Beth to sign.
Awesome. That's great. I know Peter's been in touch with her, so we can hopefully get her integrated pretty, pretty quick.
All right, all right, so that takes care of that one. If I can find the agenda again, the next thing on the topic is the Toban Beach discussion, and I just wanted to fill in the board with respect to the campground. First of all, the campground is owned, it's 15 acres, it's on Quaybuck Pond, or accesses Quaybuck Pond, Pine Lane, and it is in possession of the town. So I wanted to make sure everyone's very clear that the town owns the Adena Connected burial site. The idea was, we had monies enough to take down all but three buildings, and we have a need to take down an additional three buildings on that site. The estimate to take those three buildings down is some $12,000. What I was thinking to do until we appointed a grant person was to move forward lining up that $12,000 to be matching money for a mass historical grant to continue the work on the site for signage and the roadway and the like. What I'm thinking is that we delay this a year, because the, I'd meet with the historical commission, in fact, I asked to meet with them already on September 7th, to talk about the next phase. And my idea now, especially with Kathy on board, is to kind of shuffle that towards Kathy as far as asking the town at a town meeting appropriate that we ask for the $12,000 to be matched with some $12,000 for a UMass piece. And the UMass piece would be the signage that we talked about, helping with the roadway definition to make sure, we believe, at least from discussions, we believe the roadway that we originally laid out can be changed and be different because we did find graves.
Right.
And so we need to move it, so we need a little bit of survey work, we need a little bit of mass historical, not mass historical, UMass archaeology to help us lay out that, that route, and then with that, to get some signage, to get some grad students to help us with signage. So I haven't talked to Kathy, I need to catch up with her, but she's busy with this other grant that she's working on, so once she clears from that, my plan is to chat with her and chat with the historical commission to say it would be fall next year that we would see if we could line that up to get 12,000 of the town's money for the teardown, which would be matched by $12,000. And again, I've chatted with Eric Johnson, UMass archaeology, that that's about right as far as what it would cost.
To get their portion of the work done.
To get their portion of the work done, so something for, again, a year.
And is it just that we're, we're going to miss the cycle, or should we just be on the money set aside now?
Yeah, so what happens is they come out in November for requests for, for applications for grants.
Okay.
And then you have to have everything in by February, and then March they approve it, and then you have until June of the next year to get it done. So they want us to take those buildings down in the wintertime, so if we, if we look at waiting one cycle, we can be in line, I think.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just got confused. So November is when we'd apply for the grant.
You'd apply, and it has to be finished by the June of the next year.
Oh, so like an happy June of this year coming?
Yeah, and so that's fast.
Yeah.
And so it's like, let's take the, take the foot off the accelerator.
Yeah, we would have to.
Get out together.
If we're going to do it during wintertime.
Yeah, yeah, and so it would say November.
It's a go slow to go fast.
Yes. And again, it's not, nothing's going to change. The Nittman clan will take it for their ceremonies, their Roswell aisle, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
People are walking through there, and that's a good thing, so we'll just leave it as is for now.
For now, okay.
And we have commitments from the highway to do a couple of bushwax and keep the grass down and that sort of thing, so.
Yep.
So I think that that's the plan, and then, like I say, I'll talk to the historical commission, and I'll talk to Carrie, or Kathy.
And I'll send a note to, so if we're going to be waiting, and it probably wouldn't be something that we address at this town meeting coming, but probably the June town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So we know about that. Probably need to let capital improvement know that that's part of the plan, is making that application.
Yeah, so what I was going to do is receive the document to do the capital improvement thing, so I think what I'll do is I'll fill it out as a straw dog.
Yep.
And give that to both historical and capital improvement, FYI.
Yep.
But then put the timeline of a year November.
Right.
And then everybody, hey guys, when we get to that point.
Deep breath, right.
Yeah, deep breath, but again, be the plan for the future. Again, we've got to, at some point, again, a good reason for delay is get the master plan back together, get the economic development discussed, and then maybe it's, it's a piece of some sort of economic development strategy.
Right, okay, great.
Any other? Okay.
Well, it's, it's a question, well, it's actually a question of coordination. I had, I had someone from the Board of Health ask, like, what's the best way for us to coordinate some of the areas where we have overlapping responsibility? And my suggestion was that we just, that they just contact Karen and ask for a joint meeting.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, because I think there are some things that just would work better if we just all sat down in one room together.
Yeah.
And I think that's important at this point. The other piece is, is that we've had a couple of discussions. I know you sent me a clerk job description.
And we, I was going to ask you to, when did you want me to, it's going to be municipal clerk unless you wanted to tweak it.
Yeah, well, I would, I would just put it as municipal clerk with, with primary board responsibilities being planning board and zoning board of appeals, but with supporting other evening committees as, as requested.
And then we can get that.
And as, as requested and as available, because the primary funding for the position would be coming from the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, but then we also can, can backfill that as needed if there, if the support requirements are greater than what's necessarily budgeted just for those two committees.
Well, I know definitely that the MP will, he does.
I know, they, they want and need somebody to help them out.
They don't have a budget.
Right, and then advisory has a small budget, and they want support as well.
But they already have someone, but they.
No, they don't.
Oh, she's gone.
She's not available, no. She's not available this year, so they said they wanted in on that.
Oh, okay, so that, yeah, because I did write back to him, and he didn't, he didn't tell me she was gone.
Well, Lee Farr told me that, that she's not available, so they're looking for somebody. So they would contribute a port, their budget as well.
Right.
To the kitty.
Yeah.
So, so the person can just, and it's very typical, like, in the environment I work, we have different charge codes for different departments when we're supporting. It's the, it's the same sort of thing. The person would just, you know, fill out their time sheet in a way that made it obvious which, which budget it comes from, so. And I think we should, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and just post it as a, or get the job, the job posted.
You want me to, you want me to have a draft, right?
No.
Yeah.
Or just, or after, just posting it maybe in Facebook and online?
Let's start with Facebook and online and give it like a week or two to see if we get any applicants, and if we don't get any applicants for then a week or two, then[1773.82] get any applicants, and if we don't get any applicants for then a week or two, then let's expand to print.
Okay, very good.
Save a few bucks.
And, do you have?
I do have one, one, one other other. Didn't have the meetings with the accountant treasurer, parts of things happened, and with that I did, based on their recommendations, I called Tom Scanlon, and Tom Scanlon will be providing this board a recommendation for the audit and scope, and his recommendation is to do something in the November timeframe.
Okay.
Or begin in the November timeframe.
Begin in the November timeframe.
Basically taking advantage of FY eighteen.
Okay, so, right, because you want to do, you want to do eighteen.
With a look back.
With a look back.
Yeah, and, and again, more focused on eighteen. His recommendation was, since we've paid to do a lot of work from fourteen to seventeen, and that work is done, it's more an eighteen stake in the ground, looking back to those prior years, following the money.
Actually, that makes good sense, because we should have, based on our filing and the fact that we just reconciled everything through seventeen, we, we ought to have had a decent starting point from the standpoint of a cash balance, and so then that gives them the time, that, that aligns everybody with, now we have to get eighteen done in time for both town meeting and to do the audit.
That was a recommendation.
That's awesome, I like that.
Yep.
And it'll keep a good forward momentum, and it won't slow us down for getting the eighteen reconciled.
Right, and Carrie has some concerns as to some documentation, Monica provided, and Keith provided the documentation, so it seems like everything's in place for the, to continue on the strategy of October, October thirty, to have things in place for the Schedule A for FY eighteen.
Great.
Good progress. So, any other other? Seeing none, correspondence, we have a request from Brookfield Congregational Church, Margaret has, one of the mission people, want to reconstitute the crop walk in town, this is something that had been going for a number of years in another town, and they had stopped it, and what the crop walk did is it provided monies to the local food pantry. So Margaret is concerned and wants to reconstitute it. The idea would be that they would walk laps, Central Street, Common Street, and just as a part of the walk, she'd be working with the chief as far as the walk, the timing of the walk, and, and the arrangements and whatnot, but she's asking for permission to do a crop, crop walk in and around the common on October the thirteenth. So I put a motion forward that we encourage the crop walk.
I'll, I'll second that.
And any other discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion, and nobody opposed, motion passes. So with that, I would look to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have any public access anymore?
Not tonight.
Why is that? Is there a reason for it, or?
Nope, just Linda's not here, and we had a few things to get done, and we got them done.
That's not a good decision.
No, for me, it's, for me, it's good, that's, for me, David.